Right. Welcome everybody to the meeting. This is a special meeting of the Avery County Board of Commissioners. We'll hold a special meeting on Tuesday, July the 11th, 2023 at 3:30 PM in the Commissioners Boardroom. Avery County Administrative Complex, 175 Linnell Street, New York, North Carolina. The purpose of the meeting is to discuss and take any action necessary on the following items. Proclamation of awards celebrated by Avery County. Public comment. Board of appointments juvenile prevention council. Tax assessor collector, Bay Area ETJ voting delegate for NCACC conference. NC Department of Commerce Economic Development Strategy Plan. Memorandum of understanding and resolution. Tax administrator report. County manager updates broadband great grant cap grant LP award settlement DOT projects and medals. Finance office report budget amendments county attorney report approval amendments. Agenda consent items informational items and upcoming meetings. Okay, and if you would like to speak to an agenda item, please sign up on the sheet with the clerk. So, uh, let's go 3.1 called order. Will you lead us in prayer?
Good, let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for this beautiful day, truth created for us on this side of eternity. Lord, and for all many more for blessings of this night, life which we know comes from your bountiful hand. Dear Heavenly Father, ask to be with us today, lead us, guide us, direct us. Dear Heavenly Father, help what we do today to be in accordance to your will and for the better service of the citizens of Avery County. We thank you, Lord, and we praise you for all things with respect to you for Jesus, or to his name we pray.
And so stand for the pledge, yes, will you lead us?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and I just want to say, Ms. Martha had a death in her family and she couldn't be here, so just remember her and her family, please. Okay, uh, let's go to 3.2A proclamation awards, celebrate county government.
So, uh, board, as y'all know, once a year we celebrate county government. We like to recognize those employees that have been employed with Avery County for over 15 years. County government can be no better than the employees. And I appreciate every one of these public servants today that we are going to recognize with a small token of our appreciation. I wish it was a brand new keys to a brand new car, uh, but unfortunately, you know, we're not allowed to do that. But please know that I, as your manager, appreciate it. This board appreciates you and the citizens of Avery County appreciate the service that you provide our citizens. It's top notch and I applaud you for that. So with that, uh, Tim, if you want to come forward and if you will, when I call your name, if you'll come forward. And, uh, we usually get a picture at the end, okay? So from the DSS.
Come forward.
Okay, sorry.
Sorry, but that's what it is. I have to hold on, getting old. All right, go ahead.
DSS, Ms. Robin Moore. Robin, thank you for your heart.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. EMS, Isaiah Murray.
Israel.
Israel, sorry. Thank you, sir. And I know your heart. I cannot believe I wrote that down wrong. Solid Waste, uh, Clarice Singleton. Couldn't make it without you, ma'am, thank you. Sheriff's Office, Mr. Michael Watson. From the jail, Steve Burleson. Registered deeds and our new registered deeds, Ms. Erin English. In the finance office, Starla McLean. Definitely could not make it without Starla. Thank you, Starla. Assistant County Manager, clerk to the board, Ms. Cindy Turpfield. And we have one more that couldn't be with us today, but Ms. Martha Hicks has served as commissioner for 15 years. Do we want a picture? Yes, we want a picture. Will everybody come up here, stand with Tim, please?
You too, Cindy. Up your high, get down.
Come on, Cindy.
It's one of them biblical names that starts with I S. I get it a lot. At least he didn't go in Iraq.
Sorry about that. All right, on three, one, two, three. One, two, three. Yeah, I commented how young that girl is. I cannot believe that's been your 15 years. How like what you did?
I put her down there and she started saying.
We're not in the courtroom? Nobody wants to take the tax report?
Did you do that?
Maybe. I might have had some help from a 16 year old.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Let's go ahead.
All right, let's move on to 3.2B public comment and before we get started, I'm going to read this. The time limit for any comment to the board is three minutes. Board members are not expected to take to comment or take any action on matters during public comment. Any individual speaking during public comments shall address the entire board. Any person who willfully interrupts, disturbs, or disrupts this session will be asked to leave the meeting. If you would like to speak to an agenda item, you must sign up on the sheet with the clerk. Time limit to speak to an agenda item is also three minutes. Please silence all cell phones and electronic devices. Anybody speak in public comment?
Come on, Kayla.
Nobody, okay. Move on to, uh, 3.2C board appointment appointments juvenile crime prevention council.
All right, so board, you have reviewed and we have one candidate for the JCPC, so we need a motion to appoint Linda Webb to the JCPC board.
Move your point. Have a second.
Say.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Let's go to, I may set it right, mind careful. 3.2C to tax administrator.
So board, uh, before you use a resolution to, uh, whereas Avery County tax collector is appointed pursuant to the North Carolina General Statute 105, 349, and whereas Avery County tax assessor is appointed pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 105, 294, and whereas the Avery County Board of Commissioners desire for the tax collector and the tax administrator to serve in a consolidated office as the tax administrator, now therefore be resolved that the Avery County Board of Commissioners meeting in regular session on the 11th day of July, 2023 appoints Andrea Turpfield as tax administrator for the consolidated positions of tax collector and tax assessment. And there is a resolution that will need to, a motion and a second.
Okay.
Move your point.
Second.
Say.
Any discussion? Everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations. And thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, uh, we need to do the ETJ member of County Bannarail.
So Louis Benfield is, uh, needs to be officially appointed by this board. It has been appointed by the, uh, approved by the town council to go on the board of adjustments for the town of Bannarail. So I need a motion.
Have a motion, uh, you may have a motion to put Louis Benfield on the ETJ board of that town of Bannarail.
So Lou.
I've got a question.
Okay.
Question, why do we approve the town ordinance?
It's how their ordinance is written.
Yeah.
It's just how they they get their ordinance. There's a copy of it, uh, in the email that Riley Putney sent. And that's just how they have their, uh, ordinance set up.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and the next is the NCACC voting delegate. We need somebody to do that.
So that conference will be April, August, sorry, 24th through the 26th. Um, and we will need a voting delegate that will be present at the, uh, conference.
You may have a, make a motion to appoint someone for that?
Well, that, the, uh, the voting takes place on the Saturday evening session.
Yes.
So there would be someone there. I have to be there on the day before because being on the board of directors.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know, Kerry, if no one else wants to stay and do that, I will, uh.
I done it last year and it, I mean, since you're going to be there early, I don't mind the same to it again if you, if you.
That would be fine with me.
If it give you a break since you've got to go early anyway. You know, I don't mind to do it.
Which one of you wants to do it?
Well, I'll go, I'll, I'll do it.
Okay.
I know it ain't Tim Phillips.
That'll help us along, okay?
I'll say.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Uh, next is review of applicant for workforce, workforce development board.
So you do have an application in front of you for review for the workforce development board, and that is Paul Harris. So that will be voted on at our next regular scheduled meeting. Okay.
Let's move on to 3.3A county commissioner staff items, NC Department of Commerce Economic Development Strategy Plan.
And we'll invite Mr. Kyle Case to the podium to explain what we need to happen at this meeting.
Thanks for being here, pal. Yep, thanks for having me. Good to be, uh, with you all. Uh, for those of you that I have not met yet, I'm Andy Kyle Case, I'm with the North Carolina Department of Commerce, uh, Rural Economic Development Division. So, uh, I served the 12 counties here in the northwestern part of the state. I, uh, work out of an office in Morganton. And we work with local communities, uh, local governments, uh, counties and towns, uh, to do strategic planning projects. I have talked with Philip a couple of times and came up a few weeks ago, met with the, um, county EDC board and, and had a great conversation with them about, um, uh, what's going on in Avery County, what they'd like to see. And, uh, everybody was kind of in agreement that they wanted to move forward with a, uh, strategic plan for the county. Um, uh, thinking broadly about economic development. So, um, in, uh, in light of that, I am here today. We've got, um, I delivered a, a, a scope of work, uh, to Philip and that may, I don't know if that got shared with everybody, but.
It's in their packet.
Perfect. So, you know, we're proposing probably, uh, roughly six month long process. Assuming that you all approve and want to move forward with this, uh, we'd probably start in, uh, August or September, depending on scheduling, uh, of everybody. And, um, uh, we'd go through, uh, probably four or five meetings with the local work group, uh, kind of develop a vision and some goals for the county and come up with a, a final plan, uh, to deliver back to you all for approval. Uh, so in order to, well, I mean, I should say, uh, I am a state employee in Department of Commerce, so all of our services are free of charge. We do not, uh, charge for time or travel. Uh, the only thing if, uh, it did happen to come up, if there was just a massive number of printing or something like that, we would ask the county to cover that cost. But, uh, in terms of fee, there is no associated fee with this process. So in order to move forward, we have a, uh, we do require a memorandum of understanding and a resolution from the local governing board. Again, no cost, but we'd just like to know that there's a buy-in at the local level before we move forward with projects. So, um, I believe you've got, uh, some, uh, drafts of those as well, but I'm happy to answer any questions before you, uh, vote on that. And, uh, any question about the process or what we're doing here?
Ms. Michelle, have you reviewed this?
I have, I have, and they're, they're acceptable as to form.
And just a comment, so, uh, there will be a board put together by the group to facilitate Kyle. And we don't want that to be too big because it's, if it's too big, we're not going to get anywhere in six months. But I have spoken and all the seven towns and villages that we have in our county need to be part of this. So, you know, that kind of makes, but they understand that not everyone can be on this board for the strategic plan. But they're all in favor of moving forward with this and think it's a great idea.
It needs to be a diverse board.
Yes.
And not just made up of the towns and.
Absolutely, yeah, that's, uh, that's always.
That's going to be the challenging part, I think.
Yeah, anytime we're doing these projects, you want to make sure you've got, uh, I usually recommend, uh, 10-ish folks, doesn't have to be exactly 10, but that's usually a pretty good number. Um, and, and obviously we want it to be very diverse in terms of, uh, you know, trying to make sure we're reaching everybody in the county, um, and, and have some representation, whether that's, you know, small business, industry, education, uh, all different sectors, age groups, those types of things. So, um, yeah, that's very important as we put this, this together. Um, and then as I mentioned to the EDC board, you know, we're, you're never going to capture everybody on the work group. You want to try to be as broad as you can. But a part of the process as well is, you know, uh, we'll, we'll also come up with a list of additional stakeholders. Um, people that are not a part of the work group, but that we still feel like are, uh, folks that we want to get, uh, feedback from during the process. So even if they're not on that work group, it doesn't mean we, we might not talk to them still. We might not have the conversation with some additional, uh, folks throughout the process.
So will we need a motion with a resolution and a memorandum of understanding or?
Uh, just one motion, correct?
One motion, right. Okay, so I need a motion to adopt the memorandum of understanding with the NC Department of Commerce and a resolution passing the services of the NC Main Street and Royal Planning Center for the 2023 Avery County Economic Development Strategy Plan. All in, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Kyle, it's time to get busy.
All right, thank you all for having me and, uh, yeah, Phil for being in touch. Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Y'all are ready? Thank you, Kyle. Thanks for your time today.
Absolutely. Okay, and, uh, we'll move to 3.3B tax administrator. I'm getting nervous here. Andrea, I don't have, correct me, Andrea, sorry. I'll do this.
I was getting my assistant fan a while.
I've never done that.
Thank you, Angela, for the, the third nod of giving me a job, keeping me employed. I appreciate that.
Well, you had prepared the report, so.
I put numbers in it, I didn't make it pretty. Please accept our collections for the month of June, $34,679.28.
Right here, a motion?
So move.
Second.
Say.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Then our releases were $100.46.
You like your emotion?
Moved, except you did well.
Second.
So second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Please be aware bills will be hopefully going out by August 1st, so who knows what will be, what that will look like then, but we'll, we'll do the best we can with it.
I have got a, saw a comment today from one of our adjacent counties where their bills must have just got out because there was wailing and dashing of teeth. Because their rebound was above what ours was last year. And they did not remain revenue neutral. So, yeah, sorry to show.
Okay.
Oh, now we know. Can you take the magnitude?
To go on to our yearly, um, collection report, our Avery County 2223, if you hit the screen. Our original levy was $22,441,283.17. I do want to point out that that is a little different than what is on the, the tax collections monthly. I do want to point out that that is a little different than what is on the tax collections monthly report. The reason being is that's a figure that was given last year when the bills were first issued, and there was some discrepancies on those bills, and we had to send bills out differently. So that kind of changed that number. Our releases last year were $34,801.62. Discoveries, $279,752.41. For a total levy of $22,686,233.96.
Is that what was collected?
Not totally, but yeah, supposed to be.
There's that page.
There's that page. The reason why this is in a block and you see all bills and then real and personal bills is because we're, we still have some motor vehicle bills that are out there from prior years, so I left all the blocks the way they are, so you'll see that. But it'll make more sense when we get to that screen. But this is basically our, our total levy was $22,686,233.96. We've collected $22,332,270.19. So our collection rate is 98.44% for 2022.
Great job.
Then.
What was the 300,000?
That's out there, outstanding. We're trying to collect it. We sent letters. We sent, we put them in the paper, so we're working on it.
Just two weeks ago.
We're trying to get them. Then our 2021 bills, they were $22,352,83.28. We have since collected $22,176,719.92. Our collection rate for that is 99.22%, which that always, like this time next year, hopefully our 22s will look higher because people start trickling in when we start aggravating them and sending them more letters. Then our, next is our 10-year snapshot. And it was from 2013 to 2022, 196, for all of our bills, 196,059, Total collected 195,174,524.43 with a collection rate of 99.55. The real and personal is broken out into the 195,676,762.56. Total collected there, 194,812,727.43 with a collection rate of 99.56. This bottom section is where we still had motor vehicle bills when we collected them at that time. They are now with tax and tag together, so we don't get those bills in our office anymore. The total for 2013 and 2014 was it. After that, there's no more. They were $382,322.59. The total collected was 361,797 for a total of 94.63%.
That has to be paid when you buy the tape.
It does, but back in the old system, there was a gap. So you could gap it and you could work around it, or you could just leave it outstanding, and sometimes you could get a tag without paying your bill, without them recognizing the stop. There's all kinds of things that would trickle through the, the system then. Now, because tax and tag is together, that doesn't happen.
It's pretty hard on you.
Well, that's good. We'll try to stand up to it. Okay, so our payment agreements, when folks come in and they want to have an agreement to pay, we've worked with Michelle recently since I've been there. Sharon and I have worked with Michelle, and we've decided that four months is pretty much the limit to a payment agreement. So right now, our outstanding payment agreements are $9,005.59. Our 10-year payment agreement, and these are people that have had back bills for 10 years and they're trying to get them paid, is $29,017.55. Bankruptcies are $1,685.61. Our 10-year bankruptcy is $6,587. Our outstanding pursuits, just 2022, we've turned over $14,508.64. Our 10-year number is 195,686.19. Keep in mind that we had COVID and everything else in between those times where we couldn't go after anything. So there's some things that are sitting out there that we're working with Michelle now to try to move forward with.
There was a moratorium on foreclosures.
But even with that, when I was scrolling through and I saw this page, these numbers, that is amazingly low considering the volume, you know, almost $23 million. You know, that's a, that's a pretty good number, I think. Especially considering the, the number of properties that have changed hands recently, you know, as part of that.
And I'll point out to the board, and Michelle, come back in yet. 2002, when we went through that downturn in the economy, like we're seeing that, we're riding the, riding this economy right now with housing. Bankruptcies used to be in the 60s that you cannot collect until it's settled in court. So just, we need to be conscious of that, and, you know, we're very healthy right now. Things are good right now with our budget. But if we were to see a downturn in homes and people start, you know, foreclosures, a lot of bankruptcies can hurt the collections.
So our, that's it for my table point. We're good, thank you.
Sure, you did great.
Heard them later.
Yeah. Our revaluation sales for 2023, you can tell there's a big difference in our sales from June last year to June this year. We did 107 sales last year. We have 40 this year. If you look at the, the sales, they're starting to level out. There's one or two. I threw one out there just so you could see the one that was on Jerry's Creek that we had valued at $86,000 and it sold for $280. Those are rare, but they're out there. But if you look at the rest of them, they're starting to come more in line with each other, so things are kind of leveling out right now. And I think that is it. If y'all have any questions?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Great job.
I really appreciate it. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll move on to 3.4A County Manager Report. Philip Barry Jr.
Okay, Ward, afternoon, and just wanted to bring everybody up on broadband. The Great Grant is signed, implemented. The company should be out on the road doing the work. They have a report that's due at the end of the month to the state. I will remind everyone, that's 222 homes, 12 businesses that are in this grant. We took $198,505.50 of our American Rescue Plan money, turned that, turned that into the state, and it became $2,646,740 for this project. This project is scheduled to be finished December 31st, 2026. I know that's three years from now, so, so look when I get those phone calls, you know.
Where's the map at, Michelle? Where we gonna do it?
There's, it's the company's map. If I have an individual that calls, I can call to see. This grant was a little more not county-friendly because we didn't have any insight on where the companies proposed to put the broadband. The next grant, which we've talked about for a long time, which is now being, the pre-qualification time is now through September. So we do have companies on our behalf soliciting to the state for the CAB grant, okay, the CAB. That grant has to have the county's backing on where they are proposing to put the broadband. The Great Grant did not, so it's kind of sparse here and there. What the company that received the grant is doing is filling in the gaps. And that's the $3 million that we have pledged toward the CAB.
On the, on the Great Grant, is that map not available to us?
No.
Why?
Because we're not.
We're not invested in it. We should at least get.
They learned, they learned a big lesson with the Great Grant as well. The CAB grant has taken so long. So now, this next grant will be more county-friendly, if that makes sense.
Have any idea where they're serving, who they're serving, or even if they do what they're supposed to?
But I'll have to have a, I'll have to have a report. The state has to have a report that they serve that address.
Is that, is that with?
That is with Spectrum, yes.
And that's.
That's mainly filling gaps. Like, I had no idea that Spectrum went halfway up a road and stopped.
Yeah, that's what you said. They've got, they've got an issue where they, if they've got one person in there, that's their area, and so they come into gap. I see.
Yes, that's what this grant's supposed to do.
Yeah.
I wish I could tell the 222 homes, yes, you're on the list. Now, if you call me, I can call and they will tell on an invisible basis.
I'm sure by the county.
You can do a lot of calling, though. Yeah.
Yeah. I know where it's not, so it's not below 19E Roaring Creek. So nobody spear, plant a tree, or it's gonna be called in this Great Grant.
We kind of weigh this one.
But that's why the state has been, and they're frustrated, and y'all remember Jeff Brooks, Robert, you weren't on the board, but he was here from Raleigh. He's frustrated. The Great Grant did not go well. The CAB grant will. And we will be the first county to implement the Great Grant. We are the guilty.
And that's, that's the reason we devoted so much more to the CAB because the, the way the Great Grant was set up, and this is what we've heard from every, every county, this mechanism itself was very convoluted, very hard to understand. That's why we did so many.
Yeah, the whole test from the other group is how I do it.
But our, we, we, in essence, we kind of had to go through that step to get to where our major thrust is gonna be.
There are counties out there in the east with cable on spools from grants that are six years old that has never been moved, but it's sitting on the side of the road.
We're willing.
Right. I'm assured by the school of government, they will not, these companies have to come through with what they've said. So. So we will. We will get our money's worth, or we'll go to Raleigh, button and screen. I'm as frustrated there, and, and the, North Carolina, you know, the Department of Digital, DIT, they're frustrated. But we've learned a lot from the implementing the Great Grant. So that's it in a nutshell. We will get there, and I don't know what the time limit's gonna be on the CAB. Like I said, they are taking applications now through September from our service providers for the, the CAB. Okay? So we are doing something, and we're gonna get there. Affordable, reliable internet for every household in this county is our goal. Any more questions?
Good.
Be somebody's call. I heard that. Opioid settlement. We, thanks to the school, to the High Country Council of Governments, we've had our public input hearing. July 3rd, we did submit our application for our first grant of funding for our locally. Those are due back August 4th. We have a seven member review board that will look at those applications, and then they will come with a recommendation which has to be in the, in a resolution. The High Country Council of Governments will write the resolution, and Michelle, and I was sending it to you to make sure it says what it's supposed to say. So we are making a, some difference with our opioid settlement. Freedom Life did get their office open. They're still having great progress. And we did receive, thanks to Troy, a grant from Dogwood for some planning on the opioid settlement, so we can take a deeper dive into the issues from our drug crisis in the county. So I will be keeping you posted on that grant. So there's a whole lot of stuff going on with that. But do remember, county commissioners have to approve any spending of the opioid funding, okay? Any questions?
It'd be a good time to mention that maybe that at the NCACC meeting that you guys will be doing a breakout sessions.
So someone bragged on us a little bit, and the state said, you all are doing things that nobody else is doing in Little Avery County and McDowell County, so we've been asked to be a presenter at the conference. So Friday at 1:00, you may want to go back to your room and take a break because we're on stage presenting what Avery and McDowell counties have done, collaborate together, working together to do, bring in freedom of life and what we're doing about reentry housing in those two counties.
These two? Yeah, let me get the picture, man.
Thanks to Dennis and the county commissioner from McDowell and the county manager. Hopefully, we will do a good presentation so all 100 counties can see what we're doing. And I'm just floored that nobody else has done what we've done as far as trying to do something about reentry housing to help people change their lives. And if we're gonna serve citizens, that's important. So I appreciate your all's support on all that. It's a lot, but we're getting there. And again, I could not do it without High Country Council of Governments, Michelle Ball, providing the grant that we got to build the reentry house to Sarah Price and Troy for their help with the opioid settlement and all the paperwork. Okay, moving along to the DOT Project Summittal. So you have that in your packet. Did have my meeting with my seven towns. Friday, June 30th, we get to submit three projects. Now, when you say you get to submit three projects, if you'll look to the page that you have two pairs of glasses on to see, you'll see four projects. The construction of the new terminal building and hangar for the airport does not count against one of the three projects, if that makes any sense whatsoever. So that project will stay, okay? Then we have a project, the next project down under Avery, says carryover. And that is the 105 to Dawkins Road, widen to multi-lanes. That is a carryover project. That does not count as one of our three, all right? So those two are good. And if you'll remember, that project was introduced years ago by former county manager and board, but it has been scaled down to help it score better because it's all about scoring these projects to get them funded. So that project is not a four-lane road to Dawkins Road and buying food line and all that commercial property through there in order to do that. It's simply some multi-lanes and some turning lanes. So after I had my meeting with the towns, our new engineer got in there and said, you all already scaled that project back to where he thinks that that's the reason it's in the carryover stage, okay?
Now, did it, being a carryover, it does not, it will not be one of the three?
No. It is a carryover. So what does that mean for us? Hopefully, it means good news, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna move forward.
In 20 years. It'd be realistic.
Yeah, before I'm 85. Yeah, before I'm eighty-five. Okay, the other three projects that will be on the list are the extend the climbing lane to one eighty-four intersection. Our engineer has suggested that we break that up into two projects. So he's going to, the reason for having this meeting and giving him the list is so he can begin working on this. We won't vote on these until May of twenty twenty-four. So this is a long process. So he's going to see how this looks on paper and everything in his supplemental. So that could become, instead of one project, become two to do some intersection improvements there. Time Castle, uh, Red Light. Then one ninety-four, uh, bring one ninety-four up to current design standards and widen to twelve foot lanes. And that is from Elk Park into Banerel. And he suggested that we possibly cut that down to so many miles. So they're actually going to come out and drive and see where the worst of the curves are to get that to score better and, and scale it down. Because again, we're competing with every county in the state for this funding. So we want our projects to score as best as possible.
Was that submitted before?
That was submitted in two, when we got to do it the last time in twenty nineteen.
But did it, how did it score?
I think the scores are, so seventeen points. And eleven points, so like twenty-eight points. Twenty-eight points. And we need to be in the.
Yeah, much better.
Forty range.
One of the metrics that they used and the reason that that did not score as well was volume and fatalities. That is two of their big and uh, measurement tools. And uh, we know driving that anything bigger than a Volkswagen is a challenge.
Well, we talked about that when we met with.
And we had the ambulance hit the, hit the rock. So I'm hoping.
To get that started. Probably best thing to be start on this end and go from the diner to eating.
Yeah.
Because that.
Break it out into sections.
Dangerous place, I'll tell you.
Cause the way we've made it rich.
But that, the, you know, that one thing that we've known in, when we was in the meeting, we were at Boone and, and the working, there's what you would like to do and what you might be able to do. And you almost sometimes have to, like scaling down the, that, the first, the carryover project, that would never happen the way. So at least this is in the ballpark. It may be out left field somewhere, but at least it's in the neighborhood of being done. And, and it's, you kind of have to uh, adjust it to meet what the possibilities are.
Yeah, but uh, these projects that we have that have already been scored, I think we need to leave them on our ones that scored best. Instead of adding new projects because they've already been scored, they've already been looked at. And I'd rather get anything from the state than nothing.
See, last time that project only scored twenty-eight points and they want it in the forties. Okay? So if he scales it back on the mileage and we only ask for a portion, he feels like that will score forty points and then we can put our own.
Next time, you can ask for more.
And then, right.
I mean, you're just going to have to get that CAB pneumatic to a bit of time.
Yeah.
And that piece you were talking about is the worst.
About far as what we needed.
First and foremost.
Yeah. Fatality's on that.
Water level. What, what are they doing there?
Building a road.
Oh, bill.
Highway, D O T. So Robert, we get to submit projects every two years, but it's a two-year process to submit the project. And it has to score, they do a score, and then if it scores well, we'll get funded and they'll actually do the project. But like last time, that widening from Elk Park to the Red Light at Banerel only scored twenty-eight points. We need it to score forty.
At least.
At least, so we can get it.
At least get it on the list.
So our engineer for District Eleven is going to scale it back and only ask for a certain amount of miles to be widened. Hoping that that will bring down the cost and, and show more fatalities in that section. So it'll score forty points. So we can get some improvements to our highways and roads in every county. And like I said, we're competing with every state, every county in the state for funding. The third project is widening US nineteen E to twelve foot lanes with four to five foot paved shoulders to accommodate bicycles. Uh, that scored pretty good. It scored in the forties. So I expect them to do just a few enhancements to that. And that's from Russell's Antiques to the curve at Minneapolis.
It scored forty, but we need to leave it on that.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it'll be left on.
I don't like that being bicycle.
And that shrugs us.
That's why it's more hot.
Well, they're going to be out there so if we can get some to ride. I covered some of them pretty fast, so if we get a bicycle lane, it'd be better. Or at least ride, widen the median.
My, my suggestion was build a bicycle, build shoulders and ditches and colored bicycles.
Yeah, that's what I.
Yeah. Let's get shoulders on the road. When the white line's off the bank, it's pretty bad.
And they sell them places like that.
Yes, there is. But you know, that one scored really well because we didn't ask for the whole nineteen E. Let's just chunk it off in sections. So I think if we do that with the one ninety-four project from Elk Park to, to Banerel, we can eventually get there in the next one hundred years. Lily, put that in the paper. A hundred years from now. It's complicated, could not do it again without the High Country Council of Governments, without David Graham. Uh, and I do want to thank our engineer, that better, he, he listens. Mike Poe was at our meeting, uh, drove all the way up here from Wicksboro, all of them did, to meet with the towns because that's part of the requirements. I've got to include everybody uh, in government in our, in our meetings, so.
We've had some changes made in positions in the O T. Pretty recently. And I'm not saying anything negative about the ones that were there, but I believe the ones that are there now care more about us. I really do in working with them.
So I get that feeling and I've got them in my phone and I call and rag on them when they mow them and they pick up trash and just make sure they know who we are.
And one other thing that has been on the list, has been approved is that intersection, our nineteen E and one ninety-four, our Scotty's. It has been bid twice. The bids came in too high. The bids were led again. It was open for bids on the twenty-ninth of June and will be closed sometime late July. And we'll see where we stand then. But they were forty-some percent over what the state thought was. Turning lane and coming from the school course, coming down nineteen E. Right, the turning lane. State says you should take eight hundred eighty-three thousand dollars. Lowest bid was one million two hundred and so.
For a turning lane?
Yes.
You're talking about the bottom three?
That's a good ball field.
Turnoff side, okay, yeah.
Coming from the school.
From the school, two schools.
They may think coming down three lane, we're going to need that tractor trailer, which might kill it.
Yeah, we've had accidents there, I think, is why they haven't scored enough to get it down.
Yeah.
So this will all be coming back to you when they get it all, when the engineer gets it all worked on, I'll be bringing it back to you for your votes. Okay? Just uh, in, in your informational items, I just want to make sure everybody was aware of your letter to the emergency management department for their help in the road collapse at Limble Falls. And that is a two-man team, so I just want to point that out. Tomorrow, we have a group of eight that will be visiting from the North Carolina Department of Information and Technology, the North Carolina nine-one-one Board. Uh, Stephanie Connor will be here. They're doing a cyber tabletop exercise. And we happen to be one of the counties selected for a visit. So uh, very proud of our communications department and the steps they've took to go forward. Things are working. The center has all new equipment, tables, everything. And they're proud of, they are proud of us and I believe that's why they're coming to, to uh, show these other people in the group, you know, what has been accomplished here in every county. So again, I appreciate your all's support on that. There has been a lot of changes. There is an arts craft festival this weekend at Sugar Mountain Resort. That's the Chamber of Commerce. It's Friday, Saturday and Sunday at Sugar Mountain Resort. Uh, Friday's one to five, Saturday's ten to five and Sunday's ten to four. So never a dull moment in every county. We've got another festival to go to if you uh, would like. And mark on your calendars, August sixth, that's a Sunday, from one to three, is open house at feeding every families. You know, that had to be postponed because of some uh, illness, so they are having that. And they are having huge success, lots, big numbers. So Mr. Larson is very pleased with how that's going. And we appreciate him uh, meeting food and security needs in our county. And Mr. Chairman, I believe.
That is.
That's it.
Wow.
Let's go behind closed doors now.
All right. We'll move on to three point four D Finance Office Report, Mr. Caleb Hogan.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, sir.
I have several items for your consideration today. Most of which are roll forward uh, from the last budget year. Uh, as you'll see, it's not limited to any one specific department, but unfortunately we are still dealing with supply chain issues and uh, getting things that we have ordered. The first item is in the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, the sheriff's office was awarded various grants to fund expenses related to their program. Of these funds, eleven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars and three cents were not spent. And the department has requested that they be rolled over into the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year. Request the board to adopt the following budget amendment to debit dare drug prevention, eleven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars and three cents. And the credit fund balance appropriated, eleven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars and three cents.
Do I hear a motion to adopt? Second. Two. All in favor, say aye.
All right. Item number two, the sheriff's office receives money each month for proceeds from state unauthorized substance excise tax. At the end of each fiscal year, the remaining monies must be carried forward to the next budget year. It's been compliance with state regulations. We need to move the remaining money into F Y twenty-three, twenty-four. Request the board to approve the following budget amendment to debit state drug fund expense, ten thousand, five hundred and sixty-one dollars and eighty cents. And the credit fund balance appropriated, ten thousand, five hundred and sixty-one dollars and eighty cents.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
All right. Item number three, in the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year, the county received a Dogwood Health Trust grant that will complete a housing needs assessment in every county. This money will need to be moved forward, or at least a portion of this money will need to be moved forward into the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year. Request the board to approve the following budget amendment to debit Dogwood Trust Housing Assessment Grant, ninety thousand, two hundred dollars. And the credit fund balance appropriated, ninety thousand, two hundred dollars.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
Caution.
Second question.
Go ahead.
Uh, what happened to the twenty-two, twenty-three budget year?
Uh, so this grant was awarded in twenty-one, twenty-two. We moved it forward from twenty-one, twenty-two into twenty-two, twenty-three. Now we're moving it, the remaining funds into this budget year. We, we, we spent the majority of those funds. I believe the grant was for.
Six hundred.
Uh, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we've spent the majority of that. There's still some remaining work to be done on that project. So the grant was awarded in twenty-one, twenty-two. And now this will be the second year it's been moving forward and hopefully it should all be finished.
And for, and for the commissioners, so Dogwood Trust is great about the grants. And we still owe the company that's not finished their work. So there's another company that worked with Boeing about the housing study to identify properties that were for sale and what it would take for water and sewer and infrastructure to those properties. So that report is due at the end of the month. So we've got to pay them for their work out of this ninety. But Dogwood has let me know that there's any money left. They still want us to find a purpose. They don't want the money back. So Phil True is working with me on the next step. As soon as we get the, the rest of the report for the end of July, we'll work on the next step of what else do we need to do to help with our housing needs here in every county.
That's, that's the report from the analysis that we did in here that day.
Yeah, when we identified those properties. And then they're getting out there to say what would it take to bring water and sewer to those properties? Or community wells. You know, what can be done?
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
All right. Item number four, the Department of Emergency Management has received money from FEMA for various expenses related to the pending response and is requesting that these funds be rolled over into the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year budget. Request the board to adopt the following budget amendment to debit FEMA, three hundred and seventeen thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollars and sixty-three cents. And the credit fund balance appropriated, three hundred and seventeen thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollars and sixty-nine cents.
Do I have a motion to adopt the budget now? Second.
Is that supposed to be sixty-three cents on both sides? I'm sorry.
Yes.
That did not, I did, I read this and it just now.
I've got you. Sixty-nine is the correct.
Sixty-nine is, okay, sixty-nine.
Sixty-nine, thank you.
Sorry.
Did I get a second on that?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
All right.
Make sure we keep up that six cents.
Item. Item number five, the transportation department was not able to purchase a van that was budgeted in the twenty-two, twenty-three uh, budget year due to availability. They're requesting the money be rolled forward into twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Uh, request the board to adopt the following budget amendment to debit capital outlay vehicles, one hundred, two thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars. And the credit fund balance appropriated, one hundred, two thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars.
Move to approve.
Second. Yeah, yeah. All in favor, say aye.
All right. And, and the good news on that one is that, that, that capital expenditure is ninety percent covered by state funds. Uh, item number six, the EMS department was not able to purchase an ambulance that was budgeted in the twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three budget due to availability. They're requesting that the money be uh, rolled into the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Request the board to approve the following budget amendment to debit capital outlay vehicles, two hundred and six thousand dollars. And credit fund balance appropriated, two hundred and six thousand dollars.
Motion to approve. Second. All in favor, say aye.
All right.
Is that enough money to buy an ambulance?
It is. That is a current number that I got from Mike Evans there, EMS director.
And I think we're waiting on apparatus to go in the box. We've got, you know, I think the truck's sitting there. I think the box is sitting there. It's, can't get the companies. You know, nobody's working to make the stuff that goes in a ambulance to make it what it is, so frustration.
And this, this move that we just made was part of our budget discussion.
Yes. Yes. They, there was an ambulance got last year that was replacing a wrecked ambulance. Right, yeah, right. Item number seven, as of August twenty, twenty-three, the county can make extra payments on the hospital loan without penalty up to six hundred thousand dollars annually. Request the board approve the following budget amendment to debit contribution to debt service, six hundred thousand. To credit fund balance appropriated, six hundred thousand. To debit Avery High School additions, Thurlin Bank, six hundred thousand. And credit transfers, general funds, six hundred thousand.
Move to approve the following budget amendment. Or a motion, I'm sorry. But a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
All right. Item number.
I didn't know.
Item number eight, the Department of Central Dispatch started a radio tower upgrade in the F Y twenty-two, twenty-three budget. And the project did not finish before the end of the fiscal year. In order to complete the project, funds will need to be moved into the current fiscal year. Request the board to approve the following budget amendment. Request the board approve the following budget amendment to debit capital radio equipment, $373,250 and credit fund balance appropriated, $373,000. $73,250.
Motion to approve.
Motion.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Item number nine, the Department of Parks and Recreation ordered a hillside slide and a scoreboard for the ball field that was budgeted in their FY 2223 budget. These items were not delivered or either, either delivered nor completed before July 1st and the department's requesting that the funds be moved forward into their FY 2324 budget to complete the projects. Request the board to approve the following budget amendment to debit capital outlay, $34,600 and credit fund balance appropriated, $34,600.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Want to know, I did not have item seven or 10.
Yeah, I didn't.
Well, I sent it to you later. I sent it to you later in another email.
They stuck together.
They stuck together, sorry about that. But in another email, I sent it to you.
One question, that additional loan payment. Will that show on the narrative next year as debt service additional or is it just be, you know, because we show, you know, amount of debt service that
Right. And the reason I bring this budget amendment is because that would tie up $600,000 of, of annual budget dollars.
Right.
And the board could chose, could choose to do that if they would like.
But that was definitely, I was saying that will show up as debt service paid.
Yes, 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 it would.
Thank you.
Item number 10, the Department of Agriculture Extension, as you know, closed a bank account that was monitored by NC State University and Allen County holds those funds. They have requested that we do an amendment to roll those unspent funds forward into the FY 2324 budget. Request the board to adopt the following budget amendment to debit ag program supplies, $9,586.82 and the credit fund balance appropriated, $9,586.82.
Motion to adopt.
We'll move.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Phil, did you ever thought that was a donation? I'll be sure to tell it. Thank you all, board.
Thank you.
That's all I had unless you have any questions for me. Be out of the office Monday through Wednesday next week at a conference, so if you need me, you can reach me on my phone. I'll still be on duty, I'll just be in a different location.
There you go.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Move to 3.4C County Attorney Court, Michelle Paul.
I do not have anything that requires the board's attention today.
We'll move to 3.7, approval amendments for the April 27, 2023 budget workshop. In a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. We'll move to, we all have a chance to look at agenda consent items, if there's no questions, we will approve those by consent.
I think there is.
Always, there is.
Change, sorry. So I heard today from Stephanie Greer, which is on the storage facility agreement. In the past, it was a simple form to fill out, I simply just put their name, but I, her attorney at the hospital system has let me know that we will need to change that to Chuck Mantooth, who is president of the Appalachian Regional Hospital System, doing business as Charles A. Cannon Jr. Hospital. So I will need to change that form if that's okay with the board. This is something we have to do once a year to show the state that we are doing our job as far as a storage facility.
So I think it would just be looking to approve it by consent with that change.
Okay, thank you, Michelle.
I'll remove that, our consent items being approved with the change mentioned.
Give me a second.
You don't.
Don't, I believe we were approved by consent, okay. Here we go then, we're good. All right, you went over the informational items earlier, 3.9, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and upcoming meetings are?
Next meeting would be August 7th, 2023.
2023. Okay, if there's no further discussion, nobody has any questions, everybody's mind is clear, I guess we can go 3.11 and you get a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Let's go.
Thank you, board.